He's a banger, so.
That was the one I was nervous about when I got out. Sometimes we get too many people. We haven't been last two years. Last year we had one.
I'm talking story.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, how many additions or corrections for him?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Pat. Second by Tim. Approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both say nay. Motion carries. Uh, we do not have a pastor tonight, so for indication, we'll just put a moment of silence.
So I got a text from Pastor Alcott, and he says he's under the weather.
Oh, okay.
But he offered me supper if I would say a prayer, but I'm gonna decline. We'll just have the moment of silence.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah. It actually goes against our rules, right? So I said, I don't know where that blog to, I said.
Next, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city that's having. Great. Public comment. This will come forward and see your name and address for the record. Okay, the approval of minutes. We have a regular meeting minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Chad. Second by Dave. Approve those minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be run with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of enterprise, B is agreement with G V L Medical LLC. B is approval of presentation of names and positions for layoffs. That's the police hospital security officers. Uh, C is approval of issuing a temporary liquor license to the Hutchinson J.C.'s on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four at Art's Place. D is approval of resolution number one five six five four. Resolution to sell and option unclaimed property and bicycles. E is approval of resolution number one five six six one. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of preliminary and final plat for the Hutchinson Downtown redevelopment. Plat number four. F is approval of resolution number one five six six three. Local road improvement plan. Approving submission of grant application. And G is contract claim appropriation contract payments. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled off?
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Pat. Second by Tim to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Uh, we do have a public hearing, but we'll skip down. We have no communication request petitions. Under unfinished business, we have second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-three dash eight four four. Ordinance amending chapter twenties, chapter seventy-two. The parking regulations.
Uh, Mayor, council, you may recall, we had a first reading of this ordinance at our last meeting, and that changes the parking regulations from twenty-four hours to seventy-two hours. Um, there's been no changes or amendments to the ordinance since its first reading. Staff would ask you to consider a second reading and adoption of that ordinance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Is that the second second?
I had your second, my second.
Motion by Tim. Second by Dave. Approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Under new business, issuing tobacco license to Jedhead Michelle of Hutchinson Tobacco.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we have basically an ownership change with a business in town as a part of that. Mr. Michelle has submitted tobacco license. For your consideration, since this is a new license, the council does need to consider that. There's been a background check and everything's has been cleared for that.
I'll make a motion to approve license. Second.
Motion by Chad. Second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Both say nay. Motion carries. We have a first reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash eight four five. Ordinance to rezon property at block one. Block one through three. Our properties plat as requested by our properties LLC with favorable planning commission recommendation.
Uh, Mayor and Council. I think, did we replant this? I think Mark. I think this property was replanted, I think, a couple of months ago, whatever. And the backside of that property is looking to be rezoned into three residential housing units. Um, you know, the planning commission reviewed it. Your recommendation is to approve the request with favorable. Um, I see. Recommendation from the planning commission. This would be the first reading of that ordinance with a second. Assume that it's approved by the council, second reading will take place at your next meeting.
It looked, everything looked in order when we looked through our packets. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat. Second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Temporarily suspending the city ordinance ninety-three dash oh ninety-three point four one animal keeping restrictions from May first, two thousand twenty-four through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four for the prairie restoration.
Mayor and Council, I'll let Lynn Newman come up and address you regarding one of the more unique requests I've I've ever had in my career, but as I started looking, it's actually not that unique to a city like Hutchinson, so. Go ahead, Lynn. You get the exciting one tonight.
That's right. Good evening, Mayor Keltal. Uh, so Hutchinson Parks, our community education staff have been working with a company called Goats on the Go to look for an alternative solution for some of our prairie restorations. Um, as you may recall, we received fifty thousand dollars from the DNR um, to, for a grant to be used locally to help restore some of our prairies here in Hutchinson. Um, we at first started to look through a company that would, we could do some prescribed burns and then also working with the fire department as well. Um, with the weather not being favorable for those burns, we started looking at some alternatives. And we brought in goats on the go. And so what this is, it's a company that has herds of goats, and they use them for targeted grazing. And what targeted grazing is, um, it's an eco-friendly and sustainable approach that leverages the natural behavior of livestock to control the spread of invasive species. So they bring in the goats, they take care of everything, um, they bring them over. They will put in a temporary fence within our parks that we are looking to have grazed. They watch them over the course of the time that they're here, and then they will literally eat everything, um, targeting mostly the invasive species. Um, this is a great way, reduces um, use of chemicals. We don't have to worry about some of the things that come with burning. And um, it also is a great community engagement piece as well, too, because people love the goats. This is a pretty common practice in parks and recreation departments throughout the state and throughout the Midwest as well. They do this all over. And um, it's a great eco-friendly and sustainable way to do that. Um, included in your packet this evening, there's quotes from the Goats on the Go company. And the three parks we're gonna start with would be Miller's Woods, Roberts Park, and Riverside Park. We kind of looked at a variety of locations that were all identified in the grant that we obtained to see which ones would be the most beneficial for this process. Um, we will work with um, any adjacent property owners that they're next to the parks to make sure that they're aware of this practice and that this is, will be happening, um, just so they know that there will be some goats near their homes. Um, so the request would be to temporarily suspend the ordinance for the goats to be within our parks and for us to have them um, here in Hutchinson during that time. We're looking from May first of twenty twenty-four to July thirty-first. And then in your packet as well, it shows um, the different park locations and how long the goats will be here. So Riverside will have about forty to fifty goats, and there'll be about five to seven days of grazing. Roberts Park, there'd be about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty goats. And they'd be there for about eleven to sixteen days, just based off how hungry they are and what the weather is. And then Miller's Woods is obviously the largest um, park that we would be looking at targeting. And they would bring in about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty goats, and they'd be there for about twenty-two days to thirty-one days, just based off of again, how hungry they are and the weather conditions and all of those things.
Uh, Mayor and Council, one of the reasons for the request is obviously we don't, our, our ordinance don't allow farm animals within city limits, and so that's, that's the purpose behind the request for suspension of the ordinance. Be similar to when we suspend the noise ordinance or, or construction ordinance or noise ordinance, I guess.
My question to Mark is, do we have to be pretty specific here for, for, because wouldn't this open it up for anybody to, or not?
I'm worried about the chicken people. You know, saying we allowed goats, I want my chickens.
That's what I'm asking.
I'm kind of joking, but.
So your question is, if it has to be in a specific area, or?
So if we do it for the goats, say, but then all of a sudden, somebody else wants to have a farm animal someplace.
Of course, a dog.
Right, yeah.
A cow, maybe.
Sure, I think that um, that's always a consideration the council has to uh, keep in mind. However, if you take a look at the requests that the city is making for you right now, it's targeted for these specific areas and for these specific limited dates. Um, obviously, if someone would make a request, you might have to consider that, but if this is going to be setting the standard um, going forward, I don't think that you really have a lot to worry about considering the limited nature of this request.
Yeah, it's not a citywide suspension.
Right.
Okay, so it's area.
It's area and timeframe.
You know how people read stuff?
Oh, it'll, you know. Guarantee if someone's gonna wanna bring in a cow to graze down. I mean, I oh, that's, we're goofy if we don't think they aren't gonna do that.
Well, this, this company is an actual company that has all of the things that they need to own and operate the goats, all the liability, all those things for this.
Have they done it in other communities that we know of?
Um, actually, my ex-sitter said that they did it where he previously was. And then um, it's been talked about throughout our Minnesota Parks and Recreation Association. We've had lots of people come in and speak about it as well, too.
You know, Lynn, that was in Wisconsin. They have goats on this roof, too.
Bad example.
Mike, do you want to just share about what, what River Falls did with it, so just?
Very similar program area. Um, I shared with Lynn, actually had a chance when we first met with the vendor. The public benefit and participation is what was kind of unexpected. It became kind of the greatest thing of it, you know, people just love coming down with their kids, and it's not really a petting zoo because it's usually a, an electric fence, but you're able to just see and see, you know, the young goats and the adult goats and doing a really good thing. Um, and the areas I think Lynn and staff have identified are, are great for this, so. Um, yeah, I think it will, it will work really well.
And I think the alternative to think about is burning in Miller Woods.
Right.
And you think about those homes that are right around that.
Actually, just note again, there's no financial impact because of the grant that we currently have, so there's no, it's the grant dollars that are being spent on the goats coming in, too.
How high a fence is it?
It's an electric fence that they bring in.
It's probably three feet.
Yeah, it's not.
I don't think she'd go very much.
They're, they're vertical, so they're.
Well. Now, the, the city kids will find out about electric.
And the company that we work with, they check on them um, daily. They have cameras that they put up to watch the goats. Um, they're making sure that they're watered and obviously that, just to see the progress they're making. Well, they'll work with city staff to, you know, progress monitor how it's going as well, too, but this company does really take care of it all.
So is this an advice plan that is more than like every two years or every three years?
We're gonna see how the first round goes, and then it'd be something that if it's successful, that we would like to continue and um, with the DNR prairie, prairie grant that we received that month, those dollars are there yearly, so we would look to kind of continue to use those dollars if they're, if they're available to continue this practice, because we have a lot of prairies in town and a lot of areas that would benefit from this practice.
You know, I make some calls to educate myself sometimes, and I had to call a goat person when I saw this come through the other day. And I, I probably got educated more on goats than I ever wanted to be educated on. But, you know, 'cause I went, okay, we're gonna be talking about goats in parks here. And uh, he talked about what they eat and the noxious weeds that they, and he said they prefer them. And he said they pretty much render them where they're not receiving or replanting themselves, and you know, the, the facts behind this, once you learn about it, makes a lot of sense, and with, and he talked about the cost of chemicals, the cost of Monsanto Roundup, the carcinogen rate, you know, all those issues, and so. Commend you for looking outside the box.
It's a no-brainer.
It's kind of fun. Trust me, when she came and asked me, I'm like, I'll listen, as you're seeing, and then I looked, I looked into it, too. I'm like, well, it's there's more and more cities, I mean.
There's a lot of places looking and going in this direction.
This direction.
I will say one thing, though. If the mayor ever brings up, pick up after your goat.
Yeah.
Or done.
But I, I, I could see Miller's Woods would be very beneficial, because that, to do a prescribed burn in Miller's Woods would be
Dangerous.
That's one of the parks that needs it the most.
Right.
You need to do some work there.
They haven't cleaned that up for years, I'm sure.
Is Miller Woods the city, that city owned?
Mm-hmm.
That was donated to the city?
Yep. It's about nineteen and a half acres.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Chad. Second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries.
Well, to me, this will be a, a, a good trial run to see how effective it is, and it might be one of those things to look back on going, that was a really smart thing for us to do.
Or it could cause a lot of.
Don't wait the baby misses.
I think we're gonna get chicken calls. That's in the works.
Keep saying that, Pat. You'll have to.
We'll sit in the corner. Gary, we have ten minutes before our, our public hearing time is, so if you wanted to clean up the rest of the agenda, we could do that, so.
Uh, minutes and reports and from committees, boards, or commissions, we have the city of Hutchinson financial report and investment report for October two thousand twenty-three. Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Lynn, do you have anything else for us? Just the goats.
I have a question, Gary.
Oh.
Um, are the, the layoff, are some of those gonna have potential to maybe be hired by the?
Sure. So Health Partners is the, they have their own security staff.
Oh.
Um, and they're gonna be taking over the security duties. But they have taken on virtually everyone that was interested in continuing to work there. So um, as you saw in the letter, uh, it'll be um, December thirty-first at seven P.M., we'll discontinue providing that service, then they will be taking it over. I don't know that you'll notice, anybody out at Hutch Health will notice a difference, other than a change of uniform, probably.
Anything else, Chief, as long as you're up here?
Um, not particular out mentioned. We did um, harvest some turkeys a couple of Fridays ago, fairly successful, so. Um, people that have had those complaints will notice a reduction in the size of the flock. But uh.
For a couple of years anyways.
For a while.
Do you assume that they have in the spring?
Did you uh, have to use unwired cars again to get close?
Smarter. So we changed our methods. Much more successful.
How many were harvested?
Uh, we had permits for twenty-five, and that's how many we harvested, so. So we should be within limits now.
I have a neighbor that's pretty voice for us and aggressive towards those things.
Well, sometimes that's what it takes.
Maybe for public's uh, in, information, they were processed and given away, or?
Yep. Um, in order to receive the permits, we have to have a plan, and the city does have a plan, um, as far as numbers are concerned. And then as a part of the permit process as well, we have to explain what we're gonna do with, with the carcasses, and uh, so they were processed. Benny's Meat Market processed the birds for us, and then they were donated to the food shelf.
Nice.
Uh, there was a total of eighty-one pounds of meat that was donated to the food shelf.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Chief?
I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Mike, you have anything else for us?
No, I'll uh, I'll take my comments for the public hearing.
Okay, sounds good. Kelly, you have anything for us tonight? Okay. Uh, Mark?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing about goats?
Nope.
Okay.
That was enough.
Dave, let's start with you tonight.
Why don't we? I don't have anything to be honest with you.
Okay.
Snow hasn't snowed. Well, the trees.
There was a trees.
I would say one thing, though. The streets look great, even after all the leaves are off the trees. They're very clean, and uh, it's really a pleasure to even though there's no leaves on the trees, it's still a pleasure to right, drive down the street and see clean, uh, clean streets, so. Thank you.
You ready, Pat?
Uh, Thursday night, there's a, Hutch Health is having a Christmas extravaganza. There's gonna be a fire truck bringing in Santa and Mrs. Claus to Library Square. I believe it starts at five. It's from five to seven. So bring the kids home to Library Square. And I think there, if I'm wrong, there might be some music. I don't know. There's games. A lot of stuff going on.
Okay. Chad?
I think I wanted to give kudos to the Parks Department. The Library Square really looks nice this year, and uh, yeah, otherwise, a lot of animal talk tonight. That's all I had.
Tim?
Well, I'll do the, the health, uh, the mental health uh, awareness thing of if you're, I mean, it's between the holidays, which is the largest time in our community and across the nation for uh, people to fall into depression and to fall into, uh, it, it's a bad time of year for people who struggle. And uh, just make sure you outreach and make sure you talk to people, and if you're feeling that, reach out. We're always, somebody's always here to help.
Well, said. Matt?
I'm just reminded to the council and to the public, um, that the city's truth in taxation hearing is next Tuesday at six o'clock, right here in the, the council chambers. That's the best time to learn about the proposed budget for next year, and then to provide any feedback or, or questions, both to elected officials and staff on what's being proposed. And then with it being the end of November, I, you know, we always kind of talk about depending on when the council meetings fall. Our second meeting in December is the twenty-sixth, which is the day after Christmas. Sometimes we want to change that. Sometimes we're comfortable with leaving it as is. I just wanted to bring that up to the council, because if there was a desire to change that meeting date, we would have to do that at our next meeting, so um.
We've even canceled that meeting.
What's that?
We've even canceled it.
We've canceled it. We would just have to we still have to have a second meeting in December at some point, so.
That's when we have to give our final approval.
You have to get a, yeah, final, I mean, we've, you know, in the past, we've, depending on, like I said, everybody's availability schedules, we've either moved it up or a week or pushed it back a day or two. It's really up to the council um, to determine if you want to move that at all, or you can leave it as is. It's just uh, money me.
Personally, it'd be, I, I would go for the nineteenth, the week before. If that's it. All right, what, anybody else?
For which date?
It'd be the, the Tuesday, the Tuesday before. Be the third Tuesday.
On the twelfth and the nineteenth?
Yeah, nineteenth.
Yeah, but there's no planning commission meeting in December, because they didn't have any items come in, so that would be that, that would be the only conflict if you were to move it to the nineteenth, because usually the planning commission meets the third Tuesday, but they, they don't have anything.
Resource won't meet uh, for December either, so our plan right now is January, so that, that night is legally open.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's really up to the council, meet staff or work around, whatever.
Open both.
Yeah, neither way.
Either one works. It's up to you guys to, I'm fine either one.
Sounds like the nineteenth, man.
Okay, I can, we'll put an action item on there then to to change that for our next meeting, and we can let, I can let staff know as well for planning purposes, so.
Okay.
Did you want to bring up the uh, ticket cost for the truth in taxation?
It's free. It's free to come, so. No. Oh, yeah, and I, I'll, I'll give a heads up right now, because this happens every year. We don't talk about evaluations that night, but I'm sure we'll have somebody that will show up to talk about evaluations, but um, yeah, so, okay. We'll have an action item for our next meeting to move that to the nineteenth, and then.
Do we want to talk about our org meeting then, right after the first, because?
So it's not an election year, so we can have it that, that first regular meeting can be our um, if it was, if, if this was an election year, we'd have to have it that first business day after the, but we don't need to, because it's not an election year, so we're okay, um, keeping that as, as scheduled, so. Because we'll do all of our organization at that first meeting in, in January, then.
Maybe reappointing you as the administrator?
Yeah, that's possible.
Maybe?
That's why I'm on my best behavior right now.
Yes, you should be.
We'll see what the Christmas gifts are.
How that goes. Otherwise, that's it for me, so.
All right, uh, you know, I have just a couple of things. Uh, I was a bad firefighter, because I guess the times changed, and I forgot to mention that everybody should check their batteries in their smoke detectors. I was noted, yeah, uh, by one of my grandchildren that I should have mentioned that, so. Mentioned that, and uh, the retention ponds that we talked about, uh, I just seen tragedy down in the city, so somebody venturing out on on a pond, um, ice isn't thick enough, so please make sure you tell your children not to go out on the ponds.
Yep, and the storm retention ponds are not meant for ice skating. Like I said, I don't think a lot of people realize that that's where the runoff for most of your streets go, so a lot of times that's flowing water or new water, and it's not necessarily uh,
that salt mixed in.
Yeah, it's a, it's a poor quality of ice, so exactly, if they are, they're, and they're tempting, I understand, but to Matt's point, yeah, the chemicals, the other, um, you know, uh, things that go into them, the flowing water potential. Um, they're just not safe really at any time of the year.
Also, I want to do your uh, fire detectors, do a fire plan, especially if you have kids. Like my daycare just did that, so my four-year-old was adamant that we have a fire at our house, so.
You've implemented with that, haven't you?
Yeah, and he asked me what happens if his little nutcracker that he just put up starts on fire. I said, it probably won't, buddy.
Right, Gary, it's six o'clock, so if you, we actually have uh, that liquor license is first, and then we'll jump to, to Mike on that, so. We're ready. We'll open the public hearing. Mayor and Council, we do have, this is another, I believe a change of ownership, correct, Melissa? Um, and so with the new license holder for liquor, we do have a requirement for a public hearing. Um, I know the police have done a background check, they're, they found nothing wrong with, uh, the applicant that would preclude them from obtaining a license, but with that being said, in our ordinance requirements, we do have the right for the public to come in, I guess, provide any comments before the council would consider issuing that, that license, so. Faulty tobacco, why not?
Was this all by cash license, no, it's private party, is that what that, is that how I kind of read that or?
Open up for public comment? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moves. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to close the public hearing? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, um.
Then you, then you have an action item to approve the both the liquor and the tobacco license.
Make a motion to approve both licenses? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve, uh, liquor license and the tobacco license, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Both say aye, motion carries. Uh, we'll have the street improvement projects, letting number one project, number twenty-three dash oh-six, twenty-four dash oh-one, twenty-four dash oh-two, twenty-four dash oh-three, twenty-four dash oh-four, twenty-four dash oh-five, twenty-four dash oh-six and twenty-four dash oh-seven. And, uh, we have two resolutions underneath there, we have resolution number one, five, six, five, nine, resolution ordering improvements and preparation of plans and specifications. And resolution number one, five, six, six, zero, resolution approving plans and specification and ordering advertisements for bids. Mister?
Well, Mayor and Council, uh, good evening, um, and, uh, I'll, I'll take a few minutes here. We're not, uh, talking about goats and turkeys unfortunately, uh, but, uh, I equally excited though about, uh, the slate of projects we have, um, a little bit different than last year at least, and, and some years we've done this, but, uh, we're bundling almost all of our projects in one letting. Last year, you'll remember, we did this over a series of projects, um, four or five. This year, we're combining them all into one letting. And, um, one update though from your packet, um, materials that you received to date is that, uh, twenty-four oh-three, um, we have taken out more for budget reasons and I'll, I'll go over that a little bit more as we go into it. That was the Washington Franklin, um, sewer, um, it was basically to address one, um, service lateral, um, a lot of money to be spent to improve one service lateral that if it were to be pursued in the future, we feel there's probably something that could be done for a lot less than, than this. So, I'll go into that a little bit more as we go through the presentation tonight, but I do want to, um, let you know that and the budget numbers at the end will reflect that, that change also. So, um, do want to mention also, as far as the ordering for advertisement for bids, um, with tonight's, uh, approval, if we receive it, um, our hope would be January seventeenth, um, to, uh, put this out for bid and then opening February sixth. That is almost an optimal, uh, timeframe, so we're really hoping by putting, bundling them and hitting a real optimal time for bidding that, um, we, we see very favorable numbers. So, um, a lot of intention that's gone into the preparation of this. Quick overview of our projects, um, gave you kind of a, in a nutshell here, a number of different things. Not only an aerial view of the projects that we have, um, um, tonight, but also an update, uh, numbers, uh, by way of estimate. Um, Janine was kind, kind enough to, uh, put these in the paper here a few weeks ago. So, these are very close to the numbers that were shared, um, with the public recently. You'll see the corresponding numbers to the projects themselves, um, and then again, the latest estimates, um. You'll see the Washington Avenue, um, and Franklin Street was approximately seven hundred thousand dollars, so, um, that came out. Um, and then again, we trued up some of the others, uh, most notably Franklin, um, those numbers, um, were reduced by about three hundred and fifty thousand in our latest estimate. So, again, the numbers you'll see at the very end on the last slide are about a million less than what you had originally seen in your packet, so. Um, and again, this right here is the area that would have been affected by the project that we're taking out right here, so. And then again, just a reminder, Michael Court is this fifth project up here in the north, so Highway seven, of course, and that's right off the Highway fifteen, um, roundabout there on the north end of town. Everything else, for the most part, other than Oakland, is concentrated in that kind of downtown area, just west of Main Street. Um, I'd like to make you experts of pavement management and I'll start here, uh, Justin Black was kind enough to share these. Uh, but reclaim, uh, a lot of the projects, uh, we're, we're planning for this next year include the reclaim process. And it's a really a cost affordable, um, process, um. If you think of, um, past projects we've done, I'll draw some comparisons, um, this last year, you think seven, uh, Second Avenue and Dale Street that we did here late fall, that was a edge mill, um, with an overlay. Um, it's kind of a real baseline other than some, you know, um, maybe less expensive maintenance projects. A reclaim becomes kind of that next level before you get to a reconstruction or even a partial reconstruction. And most of our projects this year will include that, so one machine basically will come in in about a day or two's time. We'll take care of every street we have planned for this next year, so they will be in and out, in and out about a day or two process, basically leaving this kind of middle picture, you know, for the look. Over the course of that same week, the goal then will be to grade everything out. And basically, as they finish and get to this stage on any, whoops, excuse me, get to this stage on any given street, the grading will start to basically leave it like this. So, a lot of the streets will be very passable within a, a day's time, um, once the reclaim machine has come through. Now, it'll take weeks, um, to get the paving done, uh, because again, we have a lot of spot repair that we'll be doing. In some cases, as we'll detail in a few of the projects, um, have some, uh, more in-depth, um, work to do. Uh, but this is basically a lot of the process that we'll be utilizing this year. A nice way to get beyond the, the first, uh, three inches of what's typically a pavement, you know, usually it's laid in two layers, about an inch and a half to two inches thick, um, most of our street sections reflect this. You get down then beyond that three inches into maybe that four or five inch and you get into the subgrade material. That's what, again, that middle picture shows you, and it allows you really to, one, take a look at your subgrade, you know, if you have issues there um, with settling or poor grade, you can dig that material out. Um, but if you've got a great uniform layer, it just gives you a nice base material right there instead of having to bring new material in. So, just a great recycling effort, and so a lot of our project this year will include that. So, we'll start on, uh, first project, one of course is a carryover from last year, that's the Uptown Grand Sewer Realignment Project. Um, it gives you kind of a street shot view of that project. Um, again, the sewer right now runs through the project like that, bisects it. The goal would be to basically take down Glenn first, Franklin, and then make the connection again back up in this portion. Uh, the stormwater pond is not necessarily done to, um, specification, but it gives you a general idea based on the two existing homes that right now are in the process of being demoed. You'd maybe seen, uh, today, Kurt Jerpy and his staff finished up the last of the demolition, some site work to do now. But the pond will basically sit on those first two homes themselves that were demoed. And then the bank stabilization is this portion right here. Um, that will be done, um, to basically stabilize that entire area through there, um, largely with an apartment building, um, expected to come here in time, um, we don't want to see this continue to recede, uh, from that standpoint. So, we really do want to put attention on stabilizing that. There's quite a permitting process, as you can imagine, we've been led to believe though, instead of months, that it's probably a month to forty-five days. Um, this can sometimes be a six to twelve month process, just in the permitting of it. But based on the scale of work, um, we're guessing that to be more like forty-five days based on S C H's estimation of that. Next, Franklin Street, this is probably our longest stretch of, um, street project. Um, let you know too, we just met with Citizens Bank, Anthony and his staff today, just to talk a little bit about the inconvenience factor. Um, there will be a very small one, um, as you look at, again, this kind of area right here where the, where the bank is at. There's one entrance where there's a structure that has to be replaced right at the, basically their exit of their drive-through. Um, is a great conversation with them today, they're very supportive of it, they actually happen to be doing some renovation, um, this year of the bank or, uh, this winter, um, through the spring and summer. So, we're going to work to kind of coordinate, um, some of their work with ours, um, that should make for a, a really good project overall. Again, because it's a reclaim project, project generally through there, a day of disruption of, of reclaiming the road surface itself and then a couple of days, um, probably working over a, um, a Friday of, uh, of putting concrete down and then, uh, a weekend where they're closed anyway, um, and a quick set concrete that will hopefully make that entrance closure, um, very short term. Um, we also are going to, and based on the conversation we had today, River House uses the parking in this area quite a bit also. So, we're going to be scheduling a meeting with them just to talk about the project, so they're familiar with it and can probably with many months on their, uh, um, to their benefit, um, be letting their, their patrons and things know too. Beyond that, a little bit of streetlight work, um, a pedestrian crossing, again, this is the opportunity Keith had seen. There's a kind of a crosswalk to nowhere right around this third, third avenue, um, spot, so we're going to add a curb cut, um, some signage, um, just to, again, because of the school zone, um, improve that pedestrian crossing in there, very small part of the project, but something will do. And then as you'll know, quite a bit of spot repair, sanitary sewer and some other, um, but, uh, relatively minor. Oakland Avenue, this is probably our largest of more utility, again, not anywhere near like Roberts would have been this last year, but we do have some spot repair work, um, staff will certainly know, um, some of the sewer, um, issue that we've had in this portion right in here, some shared, um, sewer services. Those will be, uh, corrected in this project itself, there's only a handful really, but, um, we'll be able to clean them up. So, the project's limit is from Echo, um, down to Jefferson, so this entire stretch. We will have access, generally speaking, all the time to the cemetery, um, we've talked about that. Last year, we had anticipated, um, possibly adding a back entrance to cause really more concern with the staff. And because it's a reclaim project and access other than for a few hours in a given day may be an issue, we felt we could schedule just about any activity at the cemetery for services, um, within that, um, frame. We'll also clean up a little bit here on the old, um, main, um, portion, so. But generally, a little bit of sewer work right in here, some water services, um, that will be improved in the process. And then adding drain tile, um, will be a goal, a little bit of tree work and things too that Donovan's recommended, um, in the project. Michael Court, uh, this is one, uh, it's come up relatively late, um, this had potential to be its own letting, um, but a credit to Chad working with, uh, Jamie, um, Roseland, who's developing these five parcels. Um, this first one, of course, is, um, well under construction, they moved kind of now to the inside of the project. They hope to start some site work here this winter on this one in spring. Um, we'll be providing some temp access off an old field road here for them. We're coordinating their pavement of the parking lot with our road, um, paving project. So, um, this would be our hope to be a May-June project, um, having this open by July one to correspond with their opening of that first building. Uh, we have also worked with Craig and his, uh, partner, um, who's the owner of this apartment building. Uh, Chad has designed, uh, temp access road, basically that will run this way through the property. Um, will serve them well, still give them access to garbage and everything like that, um, but will allow residents, um, access. Um, and we've also, and a credit to Dan, um, he's worked out an arrangement with the township. So, we've already been given approval to use the township road to basically come in on that temp access there, so that will work out well. Um, beyond that, water and sewer that will extend through here, um, we do have an easement that we just got put together for this that will extend right up to the township line, um, for future, um, expansion as well as run that, what runs out here east and west. This will allow us future looping. We had debated whether to loop this, we were going to consider this. This is probably the better route for eventual water looping because there's so much demand off of this line, there's really not the worry. You maybe saw on the Star and Trip today, uh, Minneapolis is dealing with four or five hundred dead end lines that they have. Here's one, um, but again, the amount of service off of it, we really don't expect it to be an issue. And if it ever does become one, we have the ability to loop, um, relatively cost effectively with easements already in place. Um, Washington Avenue itself, um, the, one of the first, I think, resident comments Matt had passed on to me when I started was a comment about Washington Avenue, it's like, I know it well, I walk it every day and, uh, it is hard to argue with the condition of, uh, Washington Avenue. And so, uh, this, again, though, like Lynn Road, um, a number of years ago, we found there's about ten to twelve inches of asphalt already existing as a, as a surface. So, unlike most of the others, uh, where we've done reclaim projects, this is a great candidate for milling overly. Now, we'll do a little more aggressive, uh, milling, a good two inch, this will be a complete mill like we did on School Road and Century, uh, this last year, rather than an edge mill like we did on Dale and Second this year. Um, we will do a full mill, um, and then we'll also add, um, this, uh, glass grid that's, uh, mentioned here. And we had done that on Lynn Road a number of years ago, Lynn Road is to me a, a tremendous road surface. It's just, it was one of those I just noticed when I came knowing it was an older road surface, but to see just how well it held up, largely attributed to this glass grid, it's just a really good product, very inexpensive. And our hope is to put that on this portion of road. Um, again, just given a very stable environment, we think this will be a great candidate for it. So, again, a little bit of tree removal, um, along here, uh, working with Donovan and his recommendation on, um, more for structural reasons than anything else. Um, and then finally, the fire department parking lot, um, I highlighted the little alley section that finally was completed um, this last week, as well as it kind of related to all of our patching, we had a number of utility, um, uh, repairs around the community, including one up on School Road on the north end by the public storage behind Burger King. Um, all of those as of, uh, this afternoon were, were patched. So, we don't believe we have any, um, um, areas now that are unpaved or that weren't intended to be paved. So, again, fire department right here, parking lot, uh, we did do a lot of utility work in preparation, including adding this dry vial, um, here as part of the alley project. So, the alley project bore a lot of this expense as well as the utility, um, work that had to be done in the parking lot. So, um, but we also, I should note, this doesn't quite, um, indicate, this would show new sidewalk. The hope is, and, and, um, Chief Schuman was supportive of this, was keeping the existing sidewalk that runs right along the building. Um, it actually helped save the trees, three ash trees, so if we had to have lost them, you know, it wouldn't have been the worst, but they're, uh, they're healthy at this point, and so it preserves those three trees and it does save some notable dollars by leaving the existing sidewalk. So, we did kind of parse in this portion here, but this doesn't quite indicate this portion of the project won't occur next year. This though will, which will include all the curb work as well as then all the paving, stormwater work and things related, about two hundred thousand dollars worth of work that's anticipated. And then finally, the numbers, um, that go with this, again, note that project three has been taken out, that's again, that Washington, um, and, uh, um, Franklin project, that was about seven hundred thousand dollars and then, um, about three and a, or three hundred and fifty thousand less with the Franklin, um, bid that we trued up, um, or that estimate. So, total cost, we're looking to be right around three and a half, uh, three point six million. Um, our bonding, you know, we usually want this around one point nine to two. Um, again, part of the reason for trying to find where in the bundle we could get the right amount of savings and still have a good set of projects, that Washington Franklin was even more reason for doing it, um, got us to a good place. Um, I will mention this interfund loan is for the, um, bank stabilization, um, with the Uptown Grand. Um, some of the work getting done there, this again is coming from wastewater, that's the source of, to be paid back over, over time, uh, through the TIF, um, once the building's built, so. Um, and then assessments, we're a little light on this, um, Andy, um, the finance is supportive, as we talked about, Chad and Gary, you could chime in, or Matt, we talked about this at resource allocation last week, um, we do have an alternative bonding process if we need to. I think right now, we'll work, um, with the notion that we may need to go that route. Um, but if, uh, bids come in favorable or other estimates change, we could get, uh, to where we need to be with that. So, we have a lot of city property, basically, that's why our assessments are a lot lower, uh, than they would typically be. Um, you think, uh, on Washington Harrington Merrill Home, um, that's. Um, you think, uh, on Washington, Harrington Merrill home, um, that's city property, the old police station, um, on Franklin, city property, um, municipal parking lots, city property, the cemetery on Oakland, city property, uh, the fire department, city property, so. Um, just a lot of, uh, a lot of that, um, looking out over the next few years, we don't see that, we have some really, um, good projects coming, um, with, uh, uh, more, more accessible, um, portions of it, but we're a little lighter than we normally would be. And then again, as Matt shared the numbers earlier tonight, um, with the utility splits, these numbers reflect what, what were shown earlier tonight, so. Um, you see some pretty healthy, uh, contributions, again, these are the, for those portions of the project that relate back, these aren't inflated for any other reason. These actually reflect the work that relates to water, wastewater, stormwater. Again, Oakland, as we mentioned, um, you'll see the most probably on the sewer, stormwater, Uptown Grand, and then water kind of sprinkled in a few of the different projects. Um, so, that is our project slate for next year, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Mike, the, the advantage of the milling overlay is when you don't have to do a whole lot of infrastructure, correct?
Yeah, uh, like on Washington, we do have a little bit of spot repair, but we figure we can do it with some lining, so, um, you don't have to open up the entire street for that portion, so. Um, and so for that reason, we can kind of leave the surface, because it is so much, uh, you know, uh, by two minutes that's there, we've got a very stable, um, base, so. Not having to tear into that was part of the reason we really looked at the ability to just do the spot repair. Unlike Oakland where we have that one block, basically, that will be more of a partial re, reconstruction, and then everything else, again, in between is more of that reclaim, um, kind of that mid, midline, so, but buys us a really nice project in the end.
Others?
Well, we'll open it up for public comment?
Make a motion to close the.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's saying aye? Motion carries.
Then you have, um, two action items, two resolutions, um, under there for your consideration, I think the one that they know it is, uh, twenty-four point oh, or dash oh three, um, would be excluded from that, so.
Motion to approve, resolution one, five, six, five, nine, and one, five, six, six, zero, with the exclusion of twenty-four dash oh three.
I'll second. Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve those two resolutions? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Suppose. Carries.
I'll just note with a lot of that bundling, I think it really makes it attractive for a bidder, because you really could be looking to probably spend your whole summer in one town instead of having to. So we're hoping, and the time of the year too, hoping we'll get some competitive bids and.
So we actually had two, I would say will be subcontractors potential and call, um, just this week, one yesterday, one today, just inquiring as to when the bidding will open forth. They're doing some work in town right now, um, one up on Michael Court and have interest in, in staying in town. And, uh, as Matt alluded to, you know, a lot of the work, because they kind of move around, you know, you, you can bring someone into town and keep them here for a few weeks versus come, do one project, leave, come back. You can kind of knock everything out as you move around, so it, uh, it really, our hope is, you know, it bodes well. I should mention, I should mention on the opening slide, we had our neighborhood meeting last week on Tuesday evening, we did have two, um, folks that came to it. One was the owner of Dairy Queen, um, just wanted to kind of see what potential impact would be on First Avenue, he was really excited to hear though the Uptown Grand project coming and the potential for a, for a large apartment building not far from his, uh, um, um, place of business. And then, uh, one property owner who has a rental along Franklin, so just had a quick question on the assessment, uh, but that was the only two that attended it, but, um, and they were there in the first few minutes, so. Again, credit, uh, Janine for, uh, carrying the information in the paper and, uh, you know, at this point, you know, the bidding in, in January, within the opening in February, we'll have the assessment and a few more formal processes as we go through the winter.
So Mike, the, the one on Oakland would be the longest, correct?
Potentially, I would say probably, Franklin, I think, has the potential to stretch out a little bit, but Oakland is by far the most in-depth, um, although it's really only that one block, um, um, and just kind of clean up that tangle of sewer, um, sewer service.
Greg, anything else for Mike?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.